Good evening. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the Saint Helena City Council for August 23, 2016. Mr. Pitts, would you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. Where's Black? Yeah. All right. There's one on this picture. There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Roll call. Ms. Black?
Now, Mayor Galbraith.
Present.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Kroll.
Here.
Doring.
Here.
Pitts.
Here.
This takes us to public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us on issues of municipal concern that are not on our agenda this evening, and the time limit is three minutes. Does anybody wish to speak at public forum?
I wasn't planning to, but my name is Pam Smithers. I live on Vallejo Street. This is kind of on your agenda, but I've been meaning to write a letter to the editor or send you guys an email or something to just say that the new police chief and his guys have been, in my opinion, and I've been following this a lot, a little bit more effective than usual on speeding cars. As he said, making a dent. And so, thank, I want to just publicly thank him for doing that, and I know it's on your agenda to talk about him, so I guess maybe I'm out of order, but publicly just want to say thank you to him for trying to address the speeding cars through town. Thank you.
What's not on that, what's on the agenda is not directly related, but we appreciate the comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. That takes us to reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and A, B, 1, 2, 3, 4 reports. Let's start with Ms. Phillips.
Good evening. Just one heads up. For our November council meetings, we're looking at rescheduling those meetings due to the election. Our council meeting falls on the night of the election, and then the second meeting, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month, falls on the Thanksgiving week. And so, just for the public's heads up, we'll be putting out notices, but we are looking at rescheduling both of those meetings in November.
All right. Ms. Mitz?
Thank you. Two quick items. The first item is our adopted budget is available online, so if you do go to the city's website into the Finance Department, under Forms, you will see the adopted budget is available online, as well as there's a public copy in City Hall right now, and I still haven't delivered libraries, but the library will also have two public copies available. In addition to that, we have our annual audit that is coming up, and our auditor's first field visit is going to be next week, so this is going to be completing the CAFER for 1516.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Black?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Brown?
Not quite yet.
Okay. Ms. Arias?
All right.
I thought I saw you.
Yeah. Good evening. So, for our recreation report, our summer camps are officially over. School has started. One of some of our most popular camps this summer was our basketball, our soccer. British soccer was here in town, had another great season, as well as Legos just took off. Minecraft is the thing to do. We had about 40 kids in Minecraft, so they had a really good time. Also, our soccer season has officially started. We have 264 kids in rec, and we have two club teams, making it 24 kids, so one of the largest seasons we've had to date, so very exciting with that. We're also closing in on Bachi. We are our last week of Bachi, and our playoffs are going to be, we have a week rest, and then we'll start our playoffs on the 6th of September, the 8th with the finals on the 10th. So, I'm sure Mayor will be out there.
Yes, I'm afraid my team made it into the finals.
You did make it out there, so you'll be with me for a few days out there. We'll have a good time. Also, we're bringing back fall Bachi because the grooming has been great. The lights are up as of this morning.
Congratulations.
All of them have been replaced, so everyone should be a happy camper. So, fall Bachi will start September 14th, and we're bringing it on Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay. Terrific.
So, we'll have, hopefully, we'll have 10 teams on each night. We're pretty close.
And replacing those lights was no easy task, right? You had to get the fire truck there, and you were replacing...
A lot of team effort.
It was all the lights and, not just the lights, but the ballast behind the lights as well, as I understand it.
Exactly. So, the whole kit plus the ball.
All right. And so, that should all be good for another seven or eight years. Yeah. Very good. I appreciate that.
Yeah. So, everything, and then also, the teen center is officially will be open September 6th, so we're currently interviewing new staff. So, right after the Labor Day holiday, we will open our doors to another season, another school year, 2016-17. So, we're very excited.
Okay.
So, that's our report. Thank you.
Any other staff report at this time? Chief and Boden?
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Members of the council? Mr. Pitts?
Nothing to report, other than, well, I guess, both yourself and Councilmember Doring, we attended the, I guess, the celebration of the renovations of Stonebridge, which was really impressive. The units look great that they upgraded, and from my perspective, the new pavilion and grill area was fantastic to see as well. So, I was really impressed with the work that the city supported there.
Okay. Ms. Kroll?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Doring?
I have nothing to add to you.
Mr. White?
Yes. I have one announcement. The WIC that I sit on, which is the Watershed Information Conservation Council for the county, is conducting a couple of workshops, public hearings, that will deal with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which is a new regulation that the state is imposing on all watershed basins that fall into either medium or high-risk category, which Napa Valley does. And the two workshops, the first one will be on Thursday, September 22nd, at 3:00 at the NVTA Boardroom, which is at the Transit Center down in Napa, which is on 625 Burnell Street. If public would like to come and make comments and participate in the workshop, that one will be, so September 22nd, and then the second meeting will be November 3rd, 3:00, and I'm not sure exactly where that one's going to be yet, whether it'll be at the same venue or not. So, the public will have a chance to put comments in and help with putting together this, what's called the Basin Analysis Report. So, that's it.
And Councilmember Pitts took away what I was going to say, so I have nothing further to add. It's fine. That takes us to item six on our agenda. This relates to the closed session that we had on August 17th, 2016. The closed session related to two matters. One was active litigation, Water Audit California versus City of Saint Helena in the Napa County Superior Court. The other was potential litigation, and there was nothing to be reported with respect to either item, if I have that right.
That's right.
All right.
Oh, and I have one more thing. I did put some flyers that talk about the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, what the county is doing, and also, there's a map back there that shows where the basin is actually located, so.
All right. The next item on our agenda, number seven, is the Monthly Waterwise Update. I don't see Ms. Tool here. Are you going to give a report?
Yes, I'm going to...
Okay. Very good. Mr. Palmer?
I'm acting as the Water Conservation Coordinator tonight, who's off on a well-deserved vacation.
Okay. Terrific.
Okay. There we go. So, the first thing I wanted to cover is just the new rebate programs are in effect now, and this tool has put together a nice flyer and brochure that's going to be going out in the mail very shortly, so if the residents keep an eye out for that, it'll give more information on what programs are available and how to apply. And then, this is our chart of Bell Canyon reservoir monthly levels, and you can see what the dark purple line is. We are training in good location there, above 13 and 14 levels, and 15 levels, too. And the next slide is the one I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about because it's, it shows bad news. Not that I like to talk about bad news, but it's important to highlight. You see June and July there, well, historically, we were doing pretty good. The city was doing a great job of meeting the water conservation goals that the state wanted us to meet, with our average deduction, while the target was in effect of 21 percent, when that was when we had a target of 25 percent. And since that time, the state has lifted the mandatory requirements and has now gone to more voluntary conservation measures, and since that time, we've actually gone up. So, now, are, we are not conserving water, we're using more water. And so, you can see for June and July, we have a 5 percent to 6 percent increase over 2013 levels. So, that's, this is not a good trend, and I'd like to encourage the community to, even though the state has lifted their mandatory restrictions, that we continue to try and conserve water, continue to try and strive for that 25 percent target, because even though the state has lifted these mandatory requirements, we are still required to report back to them on our water conservation efforts and our results. And so, I imagine that if they start to see this trend among us and other agencies in the state, that they will quickly react and go back towards mandatory requirements. So, as Ms. Tool said before in the presentations, this is kind of the new normal for us, is to try and, the whole state is to try and conserve. We're on the verge of a four-year roughly drought. It doesn't seem like it's letting up, even though the conservation requirements have been reduced, at the state level at least, that it's still important for us to try and keep those uses down. I can move on to the chart that shows basically the same thing. The dark purple line shows where in May we were tracking down below 2013 levels, and then in June, July, we bumped up above those levels. Keep going. There's just a few more slides here about some of the programs we have. Turf removal program, the cash for grass, as people like to call it. The next one is just a reminder that if you have leaking plumbing, like a leaky toilet, dripping faucets, those type of things can waste a lot of water, and they're an easy fix. And then, these are listed, some of the programs that the city staff isn't working on. And lastly, that the Ad hoc Owners Task Force meeting to discuss the water rates and wastewater rates is tentatively set for Tuesday, September 13th, at 1:00 p.m. So, just kind of keep that in mind, that's what we're shooting for, and then more formal information will come out as that data is solidified.
So, on those 5 percent increases in June and July, do we know how much is being contributed in terms of the increase by commercial versus residential?
We haven't done that breakdown.
Okay. I think it'd be good to understand.
Right. But I imagine it's primarily residential and related to outdoor landscaping, but we haven't done that breakdown.
Okay.
Yeah. I agree. It would be good to understand that, because what I see is more and more people abandoning their lawns, even in some areas which have had quite green lawns, they're going fast, for sure. Up in Sylvaner, there are almost no green lawns left up there. It's quite surprising. One quick question, in terms of water production, which is in millions of gallons, my strong preference, I must say, is in acre feet. I can't relate to millions of gallons, but that's just me. But when it talks about water production, is that including from all three sources, I assume, Bell Canyon, Napa, and the wells?
Yes.
That's total water production? Okay.
Correct.
I guess I have a question that probably will come up later on another item with the budget, but I'm confused. I think it's been stated, at least in the record that we have, that we have less revenue because of less water usage, and I'm wondering, is that statement based on an earlier time of the year in terms of what our projected revenues will be? Because we're substantially down, and yet we see increased water usage, and I don't know if it's just a matter of timing. Maybe that question will come up later. You can think about that, but I'm kind of confused by that.
I can answer it now. The projections for the estimated revenues and expenses in the report later on, it goes through everything collected through August 12th. It does not include any adjustments, final end-of-the-year journal entries, which would be some of the revenues in Steve's report. It was an increase in June, so basically, there's a lot of the revenues that have been collected for June haven't been posted yet back to last fiscal year, so we should see a little bit of a difference. However, the drop was so significant, we still will be shorting our revenues.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? Let me open the public hearing. Does anybody have any public comment? Close the public hearing. And unless there's any further counsel comment on this one, we'll move on. All right. That takes us to item eight, which is our consent calendar, and as usual, I'll read off the items. Item 14 has been pulled, so we're talking about items eight through 13, and if any member of the council or any member of the public wishes any of these items to be pulled, just let me know. We'll go through the normal process. Eight. Consideration of proposed approval of regular meeting minutes of August 9, 2016. Nine. Consideration of proposed approval of resolution accepting the work and directing the filing of the notice of completion for the 2015 pavement rehabilitation project, capital improvement project R-74. Ten. Consideration of proposed approval of resolution approving the First Amendment to the Consultant Service Agreement in amount not to exceed $37,000 with Frank's Janitorial Service for Janitorial Services of City Facilities. Eleven. Consideration of proposed approval of a resolution approving the use of Lyman Park on September 16th, 2016, for the Mexican Independence Day Celebration Event hosted by the Saint Helena Multicultural Committee. Twelve. Consideration of proposed approval of resolution approving out-of-state travel for Finance Director April Metz to attend the Government Finance Officers Association Budget Academy in Chicago, Illinois, September 27 through 30, 2016, in amount not to exceed $3,100. Thirteen. Consideration of proposed approval of resolution approving a professional service agreement with Larry Walker Associates for storm water consulting services in amount not to exceed $30,000. Does any member of the council wish to pull any of these items? All right. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar, items eight through 13. 13 was pulled.
With item 14 continued.
14 continued.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Fifteen. This takes us to new business. First item of new business relates to consideration of proposed approval of a resolution of intention to approve an amendment to the contract between the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System and the City Council to incorporate the provisions of Government Code Section 20156 and include 1 percent cost share, and then introduction of an ordinance related there, too. And the, let's see, the staff person on this, is that you, Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Oh, it's Mandy Kellogg. Okay. I see. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Galbraith and City Council members. Tonight's items that I am bringing forth for your consideration approval are the required administrative steps to finalize the PERS cost-share agreements with the members of the Saint Helena's Employees Association and the mid-managers and executive staff of the unrepresented employee group of the City of Saint Helena. Here's a recap of the actions that have been completed to date, and there is follows. On January 12th, City Council approved Resolution 2016-13, approving the MOU between the City of Saint Helena and Shea. The MOU stated that effective January 9th, Shea employees would pay the full 7 percent member contribution and an additional 1 percent towards the city's required contribution. Shea members have been paying the additional 1 percent employer's contribution since January 24th. On March 8th, City Council approved Resolution 2016-36, approving an unrepresented MOU, unrepresented compensation program for the mid-managers and executive staff. The MOU stated that effective the date of the amendment to the CalPERS contract, the unrepresented miscellaneous members would pay the full 7 percent member contribution and an additional 1 percent towards the city's required contribution. On June 14th, City Council approved Resolution 2016-76, which amended the unrepresented compensation program for mid-managers and executive staff to include police safety management in the cost-share agreement. The remaining steps to finalize the cost-share amendment to the CalPERS contract are as follows. Adopt a resolution of intention to approve the amendment to the CalPERS contract. This action is being requested tonight. An introduction and first reading of an ordinance authorizing the amendment to the contract, which is also being requested tonight. Both items cannot be on consent, which is why they are being presented as new business. Per Government Code 20474, upon adoption of the resolution of intention, we will conduct a secret ballot election of all employees that are affected by the contract amendment, which requires majority approval of members to allow the contract amendment to move forward. A second and final reading of the ordinance, which is tentatively scheduled for September 27th council meeting. The effective date of the ordinance will be 30 days after its adoption, which is estimated to be October 27th. The effective date of the contract amendment will be the first date of the payroll period following the effective date of the ordinance, which is estimated to be November 9th. For tonight's consideration, we are accomplishing step one and two of the administrative steps to formalize the cost-share agreement that Shea, mid-managers, and executive staff have already agreed to with the city per the adopted MOUs. Our recommendation is to adopt the resolution and introduce the ordinance by title only and waive further reading. Any questions?
Any initial questions? All right. You may sit down, and we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to comment at public hearing? Seeing none on an item that has a vast history to it, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any further counsel discussion? Very clear presentation by Ms. Kellogg, I must say. So, at this point, the chair would invite a motion to approve the resolution of intention as set forth in our agenda, and also to move the introduction, first reading of the ordinance as further described in our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Next item. Grant Quarterly Report for Fiscal Year 2016, Quarter Four, and this is both Ms. Mitz and Ms. Berkowski. And I guess Ms. Berkowski's taking the lead here.
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor. All right. Tonight, I'm here, seems a little quiet. Tonight, I'm here tonight to present the grant's quarterly report for the fourth quarter of last fiscal year, as well as a summary for year-end. This report includes several new items for you this evening, including a resolution, a chart of the city's current grants and spend-down percentages, and a section for key milestones. These were items that were suggested to me as staff by the forensic account, for the forensic accountant who's working on a review of the Comprehensive Flood Control Project as some of the ways to prevent some of the past mishaps from happening again. It's part of the city's effort towards increased transparency. We feel that these, this additional information will help you and the community with a greater understanding of where we are with all of our current grants, as well as to track key milestones or requirements to help future staff easily and quickly access long-term grant requirements. And I'll talk about this one later, but one of our loans has a 30-year records retention policy, so I doubt that I will be here in 30 years, and someone else will have to keep track of that. So, in summary, for last fiscal year, the city received just over $700,000 in new grants. These included funds for infrastructure, such as curb ramps and bicycle parking, low and moderate income housing rehabilitation, library enhancement funds, and community programs such as beverage container and used oil recycling. In addition, staff is currently managing just under $4.5 million of current grants. One of these, encompassing about half of it, is a lingering grant from the Comprehensive Flood Control Project. However, the other grants include two grants for the Upper York Creek Ecosystem Restoration Project, sidewalk and bike lane projects, bike racks and bike parking, and again, library enhancements. So, as you look up in the column there that says percent of grant funds expended, you can see that we're doing very well on most of our grants. The bike rack parking is at 0 percent, but our order is placed and delivery is pending. The top two, though, for the Upper York Creek Ecosystem Restoration Project are basically at zero, and the reason for that is these are largely construction grants, and we're still in the design and permit phase. However, under the direction of Public Works Director Palmer, I'm pleased to report that we have an excellent consulting team in place, and we're making incredible progress towards getting those designs finished, and we may even, as I speak slightly out of turn, be ready for construction in spring of next year. I remain hopeful on, I remain hopeful on that. In addition, work continues on the Comprehensive Flood Control Project. I wish that I could stand before you this evening and say that this work is done and that I'm able to focus on other new projects for the cities, for the city. Unfortunately, though, I'm still spending a good of time assisting our forensic accountants with the analysis of the project, continuing some additional project organization, and most importantly, finishing contract compliance. So, that's our conservation easement, our deed restriction, our deed of trust, as well as preparing for the audit of the Measure A expenses and preparing some contract amendments. In addition, last year, I also, last fiscal year, I should say, gave a presentation to the Measure A Financial Oversight Committee to try and put their minds at ease in terms of what was going on with the city, and some comfort that we are spending our Measure A funds correctly, and we're working on getting our house in good order. Also, last year and last fiscal year, this city launched its first formal nonprofit grant program, so staff assisted with the application process, the awards, the drafting of our first agreement, as well as handling many questions from the participants. I've listed here the awardees who receive their money in this fiscal year. In future reports as we move forward, I'll also give you some indication as to how their expenditures are doing and how their spend-down is going. So, lastly, the key milestones that I spoke about earlier, these are just, like I said, for your information, community's information, and because I'm presenting a resolution tonight which contains all this information to help us track that accountability and transparency moving forward, so just again, we need to retain our loan documents through 2047. We need to maintain the levy on the flood wall project in perpetuity. It's a requirement of the Department of Water Resources. And then, for our bike rack parking, once those are installed, they cannot be removed for three years from date of installation unless we secure permission from the funder. And so, as I close, I'm going to ask you to consider and adopt a resolution tonight to accept this quarterly report that I've presented to you for the period ending June 30th, 2016, so that it remains a part of the city's permanent record to ensure transparency and accountability for all of our grant agreements. Do you have any initial questions for me?
All right.
I have one question. Did I, and if this is true, it's worth acknowledging, did I read somewhere that the Rudd Foundation may have matched the city grants to the nonprofits?
The Rudd Foundation asked us for the information to make up the shortfall, so to speak, from the initial grant applications, and then those were individual discussions between the Rudd Foundation and the awardees. So, I can't speak to whether all of them received it or accepted their terms, but we did provide them with that information, the contact information.
Well, presumably, when the not-for-profits provide their reports, they'll discuss that and say exactly where they stand, so the information will come back to the city officially. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
All right.
Well, regardless, it was very generous of Leslie Rudd to do that, and we really, really appreciate it, as do the nonprofits, I'm sure.
Exactly my point, and why I wanted to raise it, so, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Let me, you can sit down. Let me open the public hearing. Is there any public comment?
I have a, there's a public question. I'm Bobby Monet, speaking as a citizen. The grants are for nonprofit, but where does the money for Chamber of Commerce go? Is that not a nonprofit, I suppose, but is that a grant or is that something completely different? I don't understand how that fits in.
Well, you may sit down, and I'll ask the city manager briefly to respond to that, or Ms. Mitz?
The Chamber of Commerce is actually an agreement that we have with them, so it's not a grant. It's a, it's a formalized agreement that the city has made with the Chamber of Commerce.
And it's a two-year agreement, as I recall it.
That is correct.
All right. All right. Any further public comment? I'll close the public comment. Any further questions of Ms. Berkowski?
Well done, Tracy. Thank you.
Well, let me, let me ask one further question. Dealing with Measure A and how we're doing, my memory somewhere is that we were hopeful that the Measure A folks would be able to pay us the money that would enable us to take that Measure A money and meet the next payment from the state loan. Is that going to happen? If it doesn't happen, do we have a time schedule when we think it might happen? My memory somewhere is that we were hopeful that the Measure A folks would be able to pay us the money that would enable us to take that Measure A money and meet the next payment from the state loan. Is that going to happen? If it doesn't happen, do we have a time schedule when we think it might happen?
It's a very good question, thank you for asking it. So, we are holding off on submitting our paperwork for our required audit for Measure A until the forensic accounting firm has had a chance to thoroughly review and vet the information, so that we are confident that the information that we're submitting to them is, is the best that we can. A staff report will be coming to the council over the next couple of weeks, asking for the general fund to actually make that initial payment, in the hopes that come the end of the calendar year, we will be able to submit to Napa County and get a drawdown of Measure A funds. If I've misspoken, the city manager, the finance director, can chime in.
Okay, terrific. I must say, to me, it makes perfect sense to follow that sequence, and I applaud you for, for doing that.
Thank you. Should applaud the city manager, so it's her idea.
All right, the city manager. We're a team. All right, any, any other questions? Okay, then the Chair would accept a motion to accept the report as further itemized in item sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black?
I'm sorry, who made the second?
Ms. Kroll.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. That takes us to the next item, consideration to approve the Napa County City Selection Committee recommendation to appoint Napa County Board of Supervisors Brad Wagonak to represent the Napa County Cities and Town on the Marin Clean Energy Board of Directors. Ms. Black?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, before you, there's a recommendation that was made from the Board of Supervisors requesting the City of St. Helena's approval to appoint Supervisor Brad.
Wagonak.
Wagonak, to be the representative to represent the City of St. Helena as a Marin, Marin Clean Energy Board of Directors member.
All right, now I'm going to make one bureaucratic correction, because I was the Chair of the City Selection Committee at the time that happened, and it was the City Selection Committee.
Excuse me.
Which is an extraordinary bureaucratic body, to which I managed to get myself assigned. But in any event.
That's right, rally, Ellen.
Yeah, right. The, the problem here, the problem here is that, is that the way Marin Clean Energy is set up, you could put yourself in a situation where every city in town had its own representative, and that's just not workable here in Napa County. There shouldn't be one, and it's, we all have a common interest in this, and Mr. Wagonak is certainly highly knowledgeable in this area, so that's really the, the behind-the-scenes explanation of why this is before us. So, is there any further discussion? All right?
I guess it's important to note that, that his voting power is equivalent to having voting power of the county and all of the cities within the county when he votes on a particular item with the board.
That's correct. Accumulated power.
Accumulated power.
But not much. I can't remember how many directors there are.
The only other concern I have, it's not directly relevant to the, the issue before us, is, is somehow we need to get the information from Supervisor Wagonak to us on a, maybe a quarterly basis. There's got to be some way of, of, of interaction between our, our representative, Brad, and us. And I don't know how we do that, how that gets translated back to him, so that we can have, we can stay in the loop to see what's going on, so that we can help him and he can help us.
Yeah, I think that's a very good suggestion, and all the cities are in the same position, and I can certainly speak with Supervisor Wagonak when I next see him on, on, on that issue, and I'll try to remember to do so. Okay, at this point, the Chair would accept a motion to approve, to approve Mr. Wagonak as our representative to the Marin Clean Energy Board of Directors as set forth in item seventeen.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Eighteen.
And, and I understood this to mean, were we also going to talk about the potential for an alternative to Brad? How, how does that mechanism work? It was a little unclear, the staff report was unclear, but it looked like the, the county was also asking us to weigh in on an alternative. If he's not available, we'll vote an alternate. Oh, excuse me, an alternate, I used the wrong word, an alternate.
I would vote for you.
I knew when I asked that question that that was dangerous.
I'll second that.
Again, I, I think if an alternate is needed, it probably should work its way back through the City Selection Committee as an alternate, and then we can try and agree on one alternate, and certainly I'll put you forward, Councilmember Doring. All right, eighteen. Consideration to designate two members of the San Antonio City Council as the 2016 League of California Cities Annual Conference Voting Delegate and Alternate Voting Delegate.
Watch out, Mayor.
You have a nomination.
Ms. Black?
That's right, that's right. Right now I have Mayor Galbraith and Vice Mayor White attending, therefore, between the two of you, if we could have a consensus on appointing one of you as the voting member and the other as the alternate voting member.
All right.
Depends on who's driving.
I think it's in Long Beach, so we're, but.
I'll nominate the mayor to be the voting member.
And I'll nominate the vice mayor to be the alternate. Is this the second?
Second.
Now, Ms. Black?
Who made the second? You guys did at the same time.
Chair.
Ms. Kroll?
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
I must say, my experiences with these motions is that, is that a high degree of what, what was called in my day democratic centralism controls, everybody agrees.
As long as it's not them.
No, I met at the, I met at the meeting in Long Beach. Nineteen.
I'm sorry, Mr. Galbraith? Mr. Galbraith, Mayor Galbraith, was there any public comment on item eighteen?
Oh, I forgot that, and I'll open the public hearing. We, we got beyond it, all right. You know, I wrote PH after each of these items.
Just to remind yourself.
Just to remind myself. And of course, I'm also wondering whether it relates to the wastewater plant, too, but that's another matter, right? All right, here we go. Counsel to review the proposed resolution committing the League of California Cities to supporting Vision Zero, Towards Zero Deaths, and other programs or initiatives to make safety of top priority for transportation projects and police formulation, while encouraging cities to pursue similar initiatives, provide voting direction to the voting delegate and alternate voting delegate. Ms. Black, again.
And now that you have a voting delegate and an alternate, it's appropriate for the council to consider the resolution that's going to be discussed at the annual business meeting at the conclusion of the annual conference. So, and typically, they have more than one resolution. This year, you only have one. So it's for.
All right. I suppose the council can provide us direction or leave us with discretion on this item. Let me, before we get to council discussion, let me open the public hearing. Seeing none, let me close the public hearing, so.
I, I, I just, I really am a little bit uncomfortable since the costs are unknown, and I just don't think we're in a position to be contributing any money at this point to Vision Zero. I mean, it's a laudable goal, but it seems, in San Francisco, it could be, it could be up to twelve million dollars for a street taste. I mean, I just, right now, it just seems we are not in a financial position to be, to be committing to anything like this, I don't think.
My understanding is it's more about agreeing, committing to the fact that, that as we look at transportation policies and things that the city does, that, that we keep that policy and philosophy in mind, that it's not contributing towards a program that the league's going to be doing, but it's agreeing that we want our streets to be safe, we want our transportation to be safe, we want our community to be safe.
Okay, I'm fine with that, it's just when it said fiscal impact unknown, that kind of makes me scared.
Absolutely, and so, when you look at something like San Francisco, San Francisco puts forward a project for bike safety or additional bike lanes, that, that was just some samples that were given. So it's, it's more of a, of a thoughtfulness, and, and we do that anyway. I mean, our, our Public Works Director is very keen on that, and safety's one of our values in the organization. And so, to me, it's already how we lead and, and how we design projects. So that's really what they're, what the initiative is about.
All right, well.
I'm kind of supporting it, as long as it doesn't cost us anything.
All those, costs are still, I mean, any projects are, are council decisions, and so, I don't think our projects, the Public Works Director can jump in. I don't think our projects would change, because that's how we design our projects.
No, that, that's absolutely correct. And, and, you know, we struggled with this at the NVTA TAC a little bit when they talked about Vision Zero, because as public works professionals and city engineers, it's almost the same thing as complete streets, and that you're making sure that all your designs provide safe bicycle pedestrians as well. I think this is another, that kind of goes a one step beyond, just to make it more publicly, public awareness and, and that kind of issue. So, we, we would be designing projects to meet these kind of requirements anyway, and anything that would have fiscal impact, we'd bring back to council for council approval. So we're taking a philosophical position here, basically? And with no strings attached with respect to mandatory spending, and our voting delegate can help make sure of that, right?
Right, we got the message. All right. So, with that in mind, is there a direction from the council to vote for this, provided that we are assured that there's no immediate fiscal impact? All right.
So we have a consensus of council?
I don't want a long-term fiscal impact either. I mean, you said immediate fiscal impact. I don't want any fiscal impact, okay.
I think it's important to keep in mind that a lot of these things that are envisioned, we're doing already, right? Where these are, these are steps and measures we're taking, and we're going to take them at our pace and based on what's best for our community.
Right, that's it.
So a clear direction, for the record, is consensus to support the resolution.
Correct, okay. That takes us to item twenty, which is Fiscal Year 2015-16, Fourth Quarter Finance Update Unaudited, and Ms. Mitz?
Thank you, Mayor Galbraith, councilmembers. I'll wait for the, the official PowerPoint to come up. Okay, because that was the slide you're waiting for. So this is the Fiscal Year 2015-16, Quarter Four Finance Update. It is important to note that these numbers are unaudited numbers. We will be receiving the final audit later on this year from our auditors who are preparing the CAFRA for us. As stated a little earlier after Mr. Palmer's presentation, that there are still a lot of things that are moving and shifting. We are still paying some invoices from Fiscal Year 15-16 that are coming in. We are still encumbering some funds that will roll over to the next fiscal year, as well as we are still receiving some revenues, and we're doing end-of-the-year general entries, which is all part of the normal, normal fiscal process. But I at least wanted to give you an update on where we are through August twelfth, because I actually had to have a cutoff date to be able to prepare, prepare the numbers for you, and where I anticipate that we're going to be by the end of the year. So first, we'll talk about our general fund revenues. We have our general fund revenue categories, property, sales, and TOT tax being our three highest. In addition, we have other taxes, license and permits, fines and forfeitures, intergovernmental interest in rents, and charges for miscellaneous services. So this is what supports the general fund for us to be able to do the programs that we do. The revenues through August twelfth, 2016, collected to date is a little over ten million dollars. We have collected ninety-eight percent of what we projected. However, the city is expecting the following revenues to still come in. The first is the final triple flip payment, which is the projections we have, which I believe are really accurate numbers, is about three hundred forty-four thousand dollars, as well as our sales tax for May and June. We have received May, however, just due to posting, we have to backdate the general entry into last fiscal year as, as well as June, and both of those, it's anticipated, anticipated to be about two hundred thousand dollars. So we are looking better than we thought on our revenue side. Our expected revenues will exceed estimates by approximately five percent, which is about five hundred thousand dollars. So that is great news for the city. However, with that being said, our net position, including this, is still about twenty-three percent. So, you know, I want to put that out there, that we are still not meeting our, our net position that we'd like to hit.
You mean our net reserve position?
Net reserve, I'm sorry, thinking net reserve. The increase in the revenues, why we're over by five percent, is due to several different things. The first is increased building and planning activities, as Noah can attest to, he's been very busy in his department. We have had legal cost recovery this year, transient tax penalties, so that has to do with the TOT penalties and the short-term rentals that, that we have been pursuing. We did receive emergency relief for strike teams, which was a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And just remember, the emergency relief that we receive is offset by the expenses that we also incur for our fire department to go out and fight these wildfires. And excess EREF distribution, which that is not put in the budget, because we don't know if we're going to receive it every year, so when we do, it's, we get a little excited for a little extra money. We did have higher-than-anticipated TOT, and then we also had a slight increase in property taxes that were received. So the total amount is about five hundred thousand dollars that we're estimating, and about five percent above what we projected. For our general fund revenues, this is a chart that will show you what the revenue source is. So, out of the categories I listed, they're on the left-hand side, the fifteen-16 adjusted budget, that takes into consideration any items that we brought forth to City Council as a budget adjustment. We are estimating two point, or ten point, almost three million dollars. Collected through August twelfth is a little over ten million dollars, so about that ninety-eight percent, and we are estimating at the end of the year to be just under ten point eight million dollars, is what we're looking to receive. Our general fund expenses through August twelfth is a little over ten million dollars. Our spending is currently at ninety-seven percent. The available for spending for fifteen-16 is three hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. That being said, for all of the categories, for general fund, water, and wastewater, we still are paying some straggler invoices that are coming in. We are making, anticipating some encumbrances, as well as our end-of-the-year journal entries. I'm estimating the final spending is to be between ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent for fiscal year fifteen-16, and I have to give a lot of credit and kudos to each of our department heads, because this year, everybody has managed their budgets so well, and everyone is so close, because we knew it was a very, very tight budget this year. So, all the department heads are very much to be commended for watching their budgets and not going over budget this year. And, yeah, may I speak? An encumbrance is you have set aside money in fiscal year, let's say fifteen-16, for something that you're going to complete, so you do a purchase order for it. So that purchase order, in effect, encumbers the money. It basically freezes that money in that account, so it can only be spent on the purchased-ordered amount. At the end of the fiscal year, if we did not use all of that money, we can roll the purchase order over to the next year, so the funds are encumbered for the following year. The next slide is a summary of your general fund expenses by department. So again, on the description side, you have the different, the various departments, and then you have your adjusted budget. You'll see, I'll skip over to the second to the last column where it says available budget, so you can see how very tight it is. Some, you know, departments only have fifty-eight thousand, fourteen thousand. Parks and Rec, Heidi is amazing, only seven thousand dollars available for her. And then you'll see the percent of budget available. There is, it's important to note for fire department, it does show a negative number in there, and that has to do with the strike teams. So when the strike teams go out, we have extra expenses that weren't budgeted, just like we have extra revenues that come in for the reimbursements for the strike, strike teams. So expenses through August twelfth, you can see we, we're at three percent of the available budget.
But the, the, the extra expenses on the strike teams are offset, so that negative is offset by the additional revenues coming in?
It's offset by the revenues, correct.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear that, that the budget's being managed within the fire department as well.
Yes, it is. So the next category is our water enterprise revenues. So through August twelfth, we have collected three point nine million dollars, which is eighty-five percent of what we projected. Our initial revenue estimates, when we are putting together the fifteen-16 budget, we did anticipate the water conservation efforts, so the budget we, we brought forth to council, which we felt was very solid numbers, was a little over four point five million dollars. The estimates at the end of Q1 and Q2, as we've mentioned before, they were on target. However, the usage during Q3 and Q4 were lower than anticipated. Staff does estimate about four point one million dollars will be received, which is going to leave a shortage in our initial revenue projections of four hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. This number does not take into an account the slight increase in water usage, so when we, you do see the final numbers in the CAFRA, that might vary slightly. I don't anticipate it's gonna, even if it varies a little slightly, I'm, at least four hundred thousand dollars, that our revenues are going to be short of what our projections were. The expenses for water enterprise through August twelfth is four point six million dollars, so our spending is at ninety-three percent. Same as the, the general fund that we still have invoices, being paying encumbrances and journal entries. We are estimating that the final spending is to be between ninety-four and ninety-five percent of what was budgeted. We are estimating that the final spending is to be between ninety-four and ninety-five percent of what was budgeted. And if you recall, last year's budget for fifteen sixteen was status quo, there weren't any large projects, there weren't any, any large expenditures that we had, that we were able to allocate. So while Steve's department did an amazing job at keeping within what they were allocated, it still does not include major projects that need to be finished. The wastewater enterprise, the revenue through August twelfth is three point, almost three point one million dollars. We have collected a hundred and six percent to date, and that is largely due to two primary revenues, revenue streams that we had this year that were unanticipated. The first was a settlement agreement for Pond One A, and then the second was a utility billing audit, where our staff has been going through and auditing the utility billing accounts, finding discrepancies, and being able to back bill. So that's, that attributes to the higher-than-expected collection.
With respect to the settlement, it came in lower than anticipated, is that the point?
No, the settlement agreement, the funding that we, that we received for it was not included in the initial budget.
Okay.
Was that all of that, all the funds through the settlement agreement allocated to the wastewater enterprise, or some of the?
Just wastewater. Yes. Our expenses for wastewater through August twelfth is two point seven million dollars. Similar to the water enterprise, spending is at ninety-three percent, and our estimate final spending is going to be between ninety-four and ninety-five percent. The final item on my presentation, per council's request, is any checks over a hundred thousand dollars, which were cut in the fourth quarter of two thousand fifteen sixteen. We had two that were cut. The first was for carbon activated group, for a hundred and seventy-two, almost a hundred and seventy-three thousand, for Stone Bridge Wells Water Treatment Plant Filter Reconditioning, which was a scheduled project, as well as the City of Napa, our water payment of a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions, as well as just want to reiterate, these are unaudited numbers, and the audited financials will come before council when they are completed by our auditors.
I have one question. When I look at the revenues, what, what jumps out at me is the decrease in sales tax from two point eight five million to two point one six million? And when TOT's gone up, right, property tax has gone up, have we, do we have any idea of where we've sort of seen that decrease in sales that's leading to that, that, that drop? I've noticed that some of the other communities around us have actually increased, right? I think Calistoga was up like twenty-eight percent in sales tax.
The sales tax that you see on the chart for the revenues, that does not include our final sales tax for May and June being posted, which is four hundred thousand, as well as the final triple flip payment also gets lumped into the sales tax category of three hundred forty-four thousand. So your final numbers that you'll see is the sales tax is going to be right on target with what was projected by Muni Services. So every year when we receive our projections, we hire an outside company that gives us the projections, and those are the numbers that we're based off of. And Muni Services was right on target for that.
And did we, did we have a lower target, knowing that we were going to have all that road construction potentially impacting sales in our town, or?
I don't believe so, because I don't believe Muni Services took that into consideration.
Yeah, but my, my quick, by my quick math, based upon your presentation, we're planning to receive attributable to the past fiscal year, an additional seven hundred and forty-four thousand, which would bring the total two million nine hundred and eight thousand, which is above last year just a little.
Will be like two percent up, right?
Yeah. That being said, I think there, I think projections of sales tax moving into the future, as the city manager has said, is, is, is difficult, because the economy's moving more toward a service economy. And secondly, I'm very unclear that states and cities are collecting their fair share of online sales at this point, which also may be impacting sales tax that, in an ideal world, should be flowing back to cities. That seems to me to be two major trends that are concerning in the, in the, in the long term. Any event, are there any further initial questions of staff?
Just, I'm looking for a clarification on, on what you said about the ERAF funds. I, I understood you to say that that wasn't part of the projection of revenue, because it's uncertain whether you get that, but it's included in the final projection numbers. I, I'm having a understand, difficulty understanding that, that issue.
We have already received confirmation from the County of Napa. I met with the auditor controller the week before last, and we already have confirmation that we will be receiving excess ERAF and then the dollar amount that we're.
My, but my question is, when we projected the, the revenues for the part, this fiscal year that we're talking about, was that included in the projection?
No, ERAF, we do not include it in the projection, because it is not guaranteed. If, if they have the excess ERAF, then they do pass it along to the cities, but it's not a guaranteed revenue. So we do not include it in our budget projections.
Okay. So I guess it's, is it, is it not an apples and oranges comparison? If you don't include that in the projection, and then you end up getting that, doesn't that skew the, the conclusion that our, our, our sales tax is actually on, on, on projection, on the estimate, as estimated, I guess?
Can you restate that?
We're getting, we're getting this additional three hundred thousand dollars that we never anticipated we would receive. And now you're saying, well, it looks like we're pretty much even where we were last year, or, or the year before, or whatever.
The additional.
But we're not, because we, we're adding that to, to make it look better than it is, I guess, is my point.
The additional three hundred thousand, the three hundred forty-four thousand is for the triple flip payment, which was something that we did know about and was in our projections.
Oh, okay.
It's the ERAF, which is the educational.
Right.
Yeah, augmentation fund, ERAF we not, we cannot count on, but the additional three forty-four for the triple flip, that was something that we did have in our budget. That was one of the reasons why our budget projections for fiscal year sixteen seventeen, as far as our sales tax goes, there's actually a slight decrease, because we know that was the final balloon payment.
I, I misunderstood, I thank you for the clarification.
Oh, no, okay, no, thank you.
But I think you make a good point, which is that the, the real net sales tax revenue has actually gone down. Right? And I think, right, because the triple flip is sort of this, this thing that most people don't understand, but the, the real impact on spending is, it went down. And that's something I'd like to better understand by category, you know, why is that? It seems like restaurant spending is, right, where, you know, it's up a little bit, and tasting room spending is up a little bit. So where are we losing some of that sales tax revenue, right?
That is not information I have readily available.
No, I know you don't right now, but.
Yeah, I, I can definitely look at that. We do receive reports from Muni Services on a, on a quarterly basis, and they typically get posted online. And that will show you what percentage of the sales tax is from retail, from restaurants, from the categories labeled kind of weird, but it's, it's wineries. So that is information that we, that we do have.
Which food processing, right?
I thought it goes into food processing or something.
It goes into food processing equipment, and that's the way, from what I understand from Muni Services, that the state categorizes it. But when I looked at the detailed reports on it, it is all wineries.
Yeah, and.
It could be related to gas, a gas tax too. I mean, the price of gas has, has plummeted over the last several months, but I don't know that.
Could be.
And we're down in restaurants also.
It's probably like many times.
I'm not sure it's worth speculating. I think it's more worthwhile to go online and take a look.
Well.
And see whether, whether there is specific categories, as you say, that we're suffering. Or, and especially to see if, if there's some disparate impact that we're experiencing that other Napa County jurisdictions are not experiencing, that's.
Exactly. And while we may not be able to control it, I think we need to understand it, so that if there is a way that we could help with respect to policy, then we, we look at that and discuss it.
Well, we know that the gas stations are one of the top twenty-five contributors, so we obviously have that information available. We can go back three or four years to see what the difference is over, year over year. So that's not speculation, I think that's our own, we would have that information, correct? And we could do that with others, I suppose, right? Look at the top twenty-five and see what their trends are. That would be one piece of information I would be curious to look at.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. The more data we have, the more information we have, the, the better we can sort of think about it and discuss it.
All right. Keep thinking, but let me open the public hearing. Seeing no public comment, let me close the public hearing. Any further council discussion? All right. So with respect to that, this is item twenty. I don't think you're looking for any action, it's just, well, you are, you're looking for us to adopt the fourth quarter financial report, so, unaudited. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adopt it.
So moved. Oh.
Or just rece, okay, it said, I think it said in my agenda, adopt, but receive and file.
Receive and file.
Receive and file, very good. All right, do you, do we need a vote on that? No, okay, very good. That takes us to twenty-one. Consideration of proposed approval of a resolution authorized in the police department over hire one police officer position, effective September ninth twenty sixteen, in advance of an announced officer retirement in December twenty sixteen, at no additional cost to the city. This is twenty-one on our public hearing schedule, not a consent item. And Officer Emboden, Chief Police, would you speak to this?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to come forward tonight. I wanted to talk to you about the trouble we've been having recruiting officers and an opportunity that we have to, to actually fill some positions. I came before you in January of this year and asked for permission to hire an officer two months early before I had an opening, in anticipation of some absences and trying to mitigate some overtime costs. So that was January, you approved that position to be hired in May. I immediately started recruiting for that position. I just went to the Napa Academy a couple of times, the Santa Rosa Academy a couple of times, the, the Extended Academy, and the Recertification Academy, trying to, to recruit applicants. Since January, we received eleven applications. They trickled in in ones and twos, and eight of those applicants failed out of the hiring process for one reason or another. One of them was hired by another agency before we could offer them the position, and, and so two are still in the process. What that leaves us with is July first, when I was trying to mitigate the absences, we weren't, we didn't have a body onboard, and, and so we've been struggling to cover the eight positions with nine bodies counting me. And so I finally now have an officer or an applicant that I think I can offer a position to. She's finishing up the process tomorrow, and if everything goes well, I'm hoping to, to have her start by the first of September. What that would leave me with is one applicant, still in the, in the pool, who's more than qualified and almost completely done with the process as well. And, and so what I'm here before you today to ask for is the ability to, to actually hire that officer, or that applicant, for an officer position that I don't actually have right now. In December of this year, I anticipate having an, an opening. I have an, an officer that has announced his retirement, effective December seventeenth. So I would like to hire this applicant in what is, I'm calling an over hire position, to have them onboard and secured, so that they're ready to go on December seventeenth, when this officer retires and separates from service. Part of my, my concern is that because I've been trying to hire one position since January, so for eight months, I've been trying to hire one position, I'm concerned that if I don't pick up this other qualified applicant, that if I wait until October, November to start hiring for the expected absence in December, not only will I lose the applicant that I have now, but it's going to take me another eight months to get one more applicant, and if I'm lucky. Agencies all up and down the region are having the same problems. It's not just confined to San Alina or, or Napa Valley. Agencies all over the place are having trouble getting qualified applicants to come in and, and pass the hiring process, which can be very strenuous and, and rigorous and takes quite a while. We've had several that came in that I thought were going to be golden, and then they fell out for one reason or another. And we're not willing to just hire somebody because we need a body. We're going to hire the right person for San Alina, and somebody that'll fit into, to this community and this department and do the job that, that we want them to do. And, and that causes us some problems getting qualified applicants. So, so I'd like to be able to, to pick up this, this applicant and, and hold on to him. And it kind of puts us in an enviable position, that other agencies don't have more applicants than positions. And, and so we'd like to take advantage of that. When I, when I tested, when I was in the academy, you'd get four hundred people showing up for two open, two vacancies. And now we're getting one or two maybe. I show up for a recruiting trip, and, and I'll get three or four cadets to come in and listen, and, and that's just not normal. I mean, it's just a product of the qualified applicants that are out there getting snatched up by the agencies that have vacancies and money. And, and there's, in a lot of cases, they're paying for them to either go to the academy, or they're picking up the applicant through the academy and finishing up paying for the academy for them. And I'm not asking for that. This, this applicant is, is willing to wait until he graduates to, to get hired, but I would like to be able to hire him right when he graduates. As I mentioned in my report, because we've had these vacancies since July that I wasn't able to fill, we've had salary savings and, and through the, the senior officer retiring, the cost of, of, the, the salary savings from that senior officer retiring versus hiring somebody at a bottom step, those numbers will allow us to fully fund this over hire position for the full three months that I'm asking for, with no additional expenses and no, you know, fully funded through the existing budget. I'm available for any questions, if anybody has any. I just think that this is an opportunity we don't want to pass up. Right now, I'm working patrol. I worked a twelve-hour shift yesterday covering the street because we had one officer available. The officers have been really covering a lot of overtime and covering the, the streets for way more hours than they should be in a week. And, and to have another opening extended like that, it really puts a strain on them and, and really takes them. It, it takes me out of my position, I'm covering the street instead of doing my job. It takes the sergeants out of their position. I've got two sergeants working graveyard patrol right now, instead of supervising their shift, because we're, we're filling vacancies. So I'd like to take advantage of this opportunity, and I'm here asking you for that.
Thank you very much. Any initial questions?
I have one question, and it sounds like it makes a lot of sense to me. Is there any risk that the current retirement might be unwound and that, that body, that officer, sorry, wouldn't retire? Or is that zero risk?
I don't, I don't see it as a risk. It's certainly a possibility that officer has the right to rescind that retirement, and, and at that point, I would sit down with the city manager and the finance director and, and look at what our options are.
And right now, we have a lieutenant position that's vacant, but you believe you're filling that in September, in addition to an officer position?
The lieutenant position is vacant. I have not filled it. I'm hoping to fill it in the middle of September, but I'm still waiting for two of my missing officers, not missing, but absent officers, to come back.
Okay.
Because I can't promote one of the sergeants to lieutenant while he's working patrol, covering a beat.
Got it, okay, understood, thank you.
Right, any other initial questions?
You answered my first question with respect to the lieutenant. It looks like it's going to be an in-house promotion.
Correct.
First of all, I'm glad to hear the word she there, and one of the applicants, that's, that's a good move for the police department. My question is whether or not the salary savings by not having a position is offset by the, the overtime. Are they close, or is there more overtime?
Well, because, because we're in the new fiscal year, our overtime budget is, is starting over. And so right now, we've had two months of really beating on our overtime budget. However, hiring this position and having them hired and ready to go when the, the retiring officer leaves will mitigate our overtime expenses. We'll be, I hate to say fully staffed, we'll be fully, we'll be staffed as we're fully authorized. It'll still be minimum staffing, it'll still be two officers and a, and a supervisor, but we'll have everybody that we're supposed to have, and that will mitigate our overtime. Reduce it. I, I, I can't answer the question dollar for dollar.
I'm just curious whether, you know, it's twice as much or even comparable to a monthly salary for a, for a entry-level police officer?
What the cost of the retiring officer would save us would more than pay for the entire three months of this over hire. The, the last six months of the, of the fiscal year that that senior officer is not.
And what's the recruiting cost? We hi, do you do it yourself, or do we hire outside service?
We do both. One of the applicants, we did it in-house. The other applicant, we hired it out, because we don't have the ability to do two at the same time. We don't have the personnel to do two at the same time. The cost for hiring it out is about fifteen hundred dollars more than doing it in-house. But there are still some costs for, for both, because you have to pay for the polygraph and the psychological and the medical and things like that. But the actual background research itself is about fifteen hundred dollars.
Do you have any anecdotal evidence as to why the one person that we thought was promising didn't get hired here, went somewhere else? Was that more money?
It's unfortunate, but we just weren't fast enough.
Okay.
They literally got hired.
Wow.
Two days before I called to give them a conditional offer.
Okay.
Another agency snatched them up.
Thank you.
Which, which could happen here, this applicant.
Could very well happen here. This applicant, everybody that I've talked to, that's part of this hiring process, has said that we're getting a really good applicant if we hire this, this person. He's, he's in the Napa Academy now, but he's a born and raised Nappan, wants to work in this county, wants to work for San Alina. And everybody that I've talked to said that it's a real steal for us, from the academy staff all the way through everybody that's done his process.
All right, why don't you just take a seat for a moment? Let me see if there's any public comment. Is there any public comment? Open the public hearing and close the public hearing. Could you come back to the stand? I've got just one question for you. I'm just, I'm just enjoying this word, over hire. In my years in dealing occasionally with personnel issues, I've never quite heard that word. What's the origin of it? It's a terrific word. It's a terrific word.
My wife.
I didn't mean to cross-examine you and get that response, but you know, a good lawyer always knows the answer.
She coined that. She may have very well coined it.
But if we're currently understaffed, it's really a pre-hire, right? We're not necessarily over...
It isn't over-hire because there isn't a position available to hire and offer this academy graduate a position, so we're limited by the number of positions. Council's authorized a number of positions, I believe it's seventy. So if we were to offer this officer a job, you would have seventy-one people, so it's what we call in the industry...
An over-hire.
Maybe Kim created it, but it's an over-hire, and so it's above and beyond the authorized number of positions for a short period of time, when we know there's a vacancy just around the corner. And it's a way to get the training done and not put the stress on the officers, and that way, when the retirement does occur, that person's trained and right on the street.
And this resolution would authorize simply this over-hire, and then it would go back to seventy?
Yes, it's just for this position for this short period of time.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
But once the lieutenant position is filled, then there'll be a sergeant open, and so we'll have to recruit again to fill somewhere, right?
No, we're eliminating one of the sergeant positions.
Oh, okay.
We'll go down from three to two.
I see, okay.
Okay, thanks very much, Chief. Appreciate the presentation.
Thanks.
Very, very good. At this point, unless there's further discussion, the chair will entertain a motion as set forth in item twenty-one, to approve the over-hire position as requested by the police department.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White.
Yes.
Councilor Pitts.
Yes.
Kroll.
Yes.
Doring.
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yes. That takes us to twenty-two. Consideration of proposed approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a conditional offer from the Regional Water Quality Control Board to settle alleged discharge violations at the wastewater treatment and reclamation plant through payment of mandatory penalty in the amount of fifteen thousand, and authorizing transfer fifteen thousand from the wastewater capital project fund to the wastewater operating fund to pay for the penalty. Mr. Palmer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. On August fourth, the Regional Water Quality Control Board sent us a letter notifying the city of alleged violations at discharge limits and conditional offer to settle those violations through payment of fifteen thousand dollars in mandatory minimum penalties pursuant to the water code. Regional Board is requiring us to respond by September fifth, whether we accept this offer or not. The letter from the Board is included in the agenda packet. And just, I'll give you a little history of what happened, and then talk recommended actions. Then I want, I was going to circle back a little bit to highlight a couple of things before I turn it over for questions. So this happened back in March of twenty-sixteen, we were discharging to the river, and there were eight different instances of effluent limit violations that we reported. One of them was exceedance of the total call form daily maximum. Staff is pretty certain this is a sampling error, and it's not the result of treatment being ineffective. We believe it was something that occurred in our sampling methodology. The other seven violations of the eight occurred because the daily reported values for pH were lower than instantaneous minimum of six point five allowed by the permit, and the reported value in our effluent ranged from six point one to six point four units. And I will circle back, talk about it a little later. So in the way they calculate the fine, they give you, it's, I think I'm doing this right, it's three thousand dollars per violation, but then they give you a credit of three, they let you go, there's a grace period of like three violations, and then they start dinging you. So fifteen thousand dollars is the mandatory penalty. We can elect to have the penalty directed to the regional board's supplemental environmental project fund, which supports regional monitoring program for the San Francisco Bay estuary with the overarching goal to restore and protect beneficial uses of the region's waters. And the funding for the R and P is managed by a nonprofit group, so when we actually write our check, it won't go to the board, it goes directly to this nonprofit, to the supplemental environmental project. So it'll have a direct benefit to the quality of the water in the bay. If, once we accept, and if we accept the conditional offer and submit to the Board, it'll be open to public comment for thirty days, it'll be published, and the Board will accept public comment, and then the executive director of the Board can execute the agreement, and we'll have another thirty days to submit payment. The fiscal impact of this is that we don't have, as I talked before, and both here and at the rate study task force, is that we don't have a reserve fund to pay for any of this. And as we saw in the presentation earlier by the finance director, Mitz, is that their operating revenues and expenses are basically balanced, so, you know, we're spending everything we have on keeping the system running. So this is an additional expense that's unplanned for, and we'll have to pull from somewhere. And so the plan that I presented here is to take that from a capital project fund. There is a capital project fund balance of about a million dollars that we've set aside for projects. I programmed all that money in the CIP to be expended in the next two years, so this will reduce the money available for project ostensibly. Now, it's a small amount as compared to the total amount of project costs, and the bigger issue is getting the rates updated so that we can build the projects we need to build to keep operating the system. So that's the fiscal impact. We are recommending the council accept the conditional offer, or authorize city manager accept the conditional offer and authorize the payment, and that the penalty be paid to the Sepulento Environmental Project Fund, and that the money come from the wastewater capital project fund. So the two things I want to circle back to before I open up for questions is, first of all, I just want to let the council and the community know that I take this very seriously, and we're taking drastic steps to try and make sure this doesn't happen again. That's our goal. The chief wastewater plant operator who was in place at the time has since retired, and Jarrett Wessini, who's here in the audience now, I asked him to come so you guys could at least put a picture or a face to the name. He's now acting chief, so he's in charge. We take this very seriously. We've hired a very experienced retired operator, part-time, to come in and help us do a number of things to make sure that this doesn't happen again. One of the things he's going to do is help us evaluate this pH violation and figure out what exactly happened and how we can prevent it from happening again. He's going to do a regulatory audit with us to make sure, he's going to pretend like he's a regulator and come in. He's got these forms he uses in his consulting firm to come in and look at the things we're doing and make sure, look at it from the point of view as a regulatory agency, so that if we get an audit, we're prepared, we've already been exposed to what they're going to look for. He's going to help us work on some forms and procedures, and he's going to help us prioritize some of the maintenance tasks that are out there, some of the deferred maintenance projects that Jarrett's been compiling. He's got a large list, and this gentleman, Chris, is going to help us prioritize that so we know what's most important to focus on. So that's kind of, I just wanted to make sure that the council and community know that, that we do take this seriously, and I don't want this to happen again, and Jarrett doesn't want this to happen again, so we're trying our best to make sure it doesn't happen again. And secondly, I think the fiscal impact, I probably don't need to point this out, but so people can hear me say it, that this shows the need for the wastewater rate update, because we don't have funds set aside to pay for this type of violation, which can't happen, and because of that, we have to take money away from needed capital improvements in order to pay for it. So with that, I'll close and make myself available for questions.
Are there any initial questions before I open the public hearing?
I have one question. You know, it's referred to as a mandatory penalty, I believe it's a minimum amount. Is it truly mandatory? And, you know, could we suggest to the Regional Water Quality Board that those monies would be better spent in terms of funding the actions that we're taking, like that you just described, to ensure that this doesn't happen again? And could we send a letter explaining that to see how they react, or not?
Right, so it's a mandatory minimum in the code, and there is a procedure to protest the penalty, and we'd have to request the public hearing, and so in that case, we couldn't do administratively, staff to staff, writing letters. We'd have to go in front of the Board at one of the regularly scheduled meetings and present our case in a public hearing. Okay?
I have a more...
I would, as your city manager, I would recommend against that. We are working very hard to reestablish our relationship with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. I think we've done a good job. Steve and I have worked very, very hard to develop productive working relationships and to rebuild that trust that, quite frankly, hasn't been there for quite a while. And so I talked to, left a message and talked to the staff there of the Assistant Executive Director, who I've been working with. Remember, this was the first meeting on my calendar when I got here, over two and a half years, over two years ago, was to go to the Regional Water Quality Control Board on a...
(laughing).
Sorry, ten. And we've worked very hard to rebuild that trust, and I called her personally and said, you know, "We understand we've made this mistake, and we're taking it very seriously, and to keep that line of communication going, and I think to try to protest it, your point's very well taken, and we wish," and that's why Steve's taking this so seriously, because the monies do need to be invested in our system and not spent on penalties like this. But in this instance, we need to pay the fine and apologize and move on, and fix it. And I'm very proud of Director Palmer and the work that he's doing, and Jarrett as well, the willingness to step up and step in and take responsibility and try to make the plant a better functioning plant. Together with the team, I know we're going to get there.
Yeah, it seems like a protest would send the wrong signal, and it's already been acknowledged with the minimum that we're tight in trying to do what we need to do.
I just have one more general question. Why do we discharge to the river? Why doesn't all the water go to the spray field?
I was wondering...
Right, we're limited on the spray field to the agronomic rates that it's calculated for how much the plants can absorb. So basically, when it's raining, we can't. We have to store it, because we can't apply when it's rainy, and we can't have ponded water out there. So it's a matter of when we can apply and how much water we can apply to the spray fields.
So this violation occurred during the rainy season?
March.
It was during, yeah, it was during a storm.
During a storm, I see.
But how do we get into a discharge situation? Is the storage overflowing? Like, what's happening physically?
That's basically it. You get to the point where you can't apply to land anymore, so you start storing, and then at some point, there's no more room to store, so you have to let it go.
But you're testing it as you're letting it go?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Very interesting. Okay, let me open the public hearing. Any public comment? Yes?
I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I just, I'm very moved by your report, and, you know, I'm always telling my grandkids and everything, you know, we don't make mistakes, we don't learn anything. And so mistakes in themselves aren't necessarily terrible, but it's how we respond to them that's really important, and it really rebuilds and supports my trust in the city staff, and in you, and the work that you're doing, hearing how you have responded, and I really have, I really feel good about that. And in addition, the money is going to a good place, too. So, you know, I understand we don't want to spend it, but, you know, that's better than not going to a good place, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. All right, any further counsel discussion?
So my understanding is that the effluent is, on these charges here, or these fines, was more acidic, basically, than it was supposed to be, correct?
Yes.
And the second, the second question is, do we know whether it's a treatment issue, or is it the quality of the waste coming into the system as being highly acidic? Or both?
I think it's a combination of both, and that's something we're investigating, and we're trying to figure it out. We've done some sampling as part of the feasibility study that seemed to indicate that the influent to the plant, the untreated waste coming to the plant is more acidic than it has been in the past, so that's certainly a determining factor. And then, you know, some of the disinfection procedures, or, I'm sorry, de-clarnation procedures require the addition of acid, which also, you know, it lowers the pH. So my gut is that there's, it's a combination, and we're investigating it, and it's something we'll have to figure out.
Okay. If it's more acidic than in the past, does that suggest that some commercial or industrial user is dumping in a way that user should not be dumping?
It's really hard to say. I can't say at this point.
Okay.
Jarrett knows.
Oh, and any of it...
(laughing).
Any of it, yes, welcome very much to the city, and we really look forward to having you work with us and be down at the treatment plant. Gives us a lot of confidence moving forward, so thanks very much for coming this evening as well and introducing yourself. We're delighted you're on board.
I'd like to invite all of you to visit at any time. Morning's better. I've seen a few of you, and it's generally hot and miserable in the afternoon. We can talk about these issues if you'd like.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Just so you know, Jarrett's been with us for just a little over two years now, and Jarrett, he has one of those great stories, that this is something that he wanted to pursue as a career, and so he actually volunteered as an intern, and that's how he got started with us. And so when we wrote the intern policy, we brought that before council, Jarrett was one of our inspirations. That's how we get really quality staff, is they come in and they become part of our team. And so from that, we were able to offer him a part-time position, and then when Steve got here, and we looked at the needs at the wastewater plant, we made it a full-time position, and then we've just recently promoted him. So one of those great stories.[1763.14]